All right, 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the regular Village Board meeting in the quarter while Stan joins me in the platte delusion. The platte delusion is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's call the board.
Morevka.
Here.
Jones.
Sluse.
Here.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Here.
Fountain.
Here.
All right, in your packet four minutes from our regular Village Board meeting of October 26. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion. You can't talk today, huh? Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Fountain.
Okay.
Jones is not here.
Did you mean to vote or no?
We're done.
Okay. All right. In your packets were accounts payable and payroll. Payroll for the pay period ending 10/31 with $49,963.5. Accounts payable $15,783.80. Any questions on any of the bills? If not, entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Morevka.
Ham.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Oh.
Fountain.
Yes.
All right, comment? Anybody that said anything not on the agenda? Is Aqua on the line?
No.
Not that you know of.
No.
Okay. All right. Reports at committee, just so you guys know, I had asked the staff not to attend this meeting just because of, you know, for caution, we did have a COVID-positive employee, so we just want to kind of keep interactions down to a minimum. So if you have any questions for staff, just let Amy know and she can report back.
Do we have somebody on the line? Hi, it's Angie.
Hi, Angie.
Hi, how are you?
Good. You're just in time. Go ahead and give us your report, please.
Good, I don't have, Tracy, Tracy is going in too. I don't know if she's on the line yet. I don't have an engineering update. I think she was going to give the update from that perspective, but just wanted to call in to see if there was any, any questions or any specific items that needed follow-up.
I guess the big question is that we heard you received the permit from the railroad to take the water main under the railroad on Corning, and you said that you still are going to try to do that this fall, correct?
Correct, correct, yes. We're going to move forward with it this fall. Some of the final paving and such, that might need to wait till spring will be, we are not saying we're moving off, we're planning on moving forward with that now.
Okay, but there'll be some paving put down over the winter, right?
Yeah, it just won't be the final.
Got it.
Yep, yep.
Well, we'll come back to you when Tracy comes on the line if she has something else for us, okay? Unless the-
That sounds great, thanks.
The board have any questions for Angie from Aqua? All right, let's move down to reports then. Village administrator report.
I don't have anything at this meeting. I'll have something for the second meeting, and I think we were going to kind of as a policy have most of the reports for you guys at the second meeting from the staff, if that, if you guys don't mind that. But I do have an engineering report from Troy. And I-57, I don't know if you noticed, but they had some trucks out there, and the good news is that they started to do some pavement corings, and this is what we are waiting for to try and get our design engineering going on the I-57 portion there. So we're really excited about that. It's holding us up a little bit. So that finally got approved, and they were out there doing that today. West Street resurfacing IDOT project, we'll be submitting pre-final plans and specifications to IDOT this week, so we'll stay on target for that for April 2021 letting and summer construction. The DCO grant sidewalk corner replacement project is substantially complete. And Troy's report on the Corning Avenue resurfacing project is that contractors started doing the surface removal operations. So I don't know if you noticed any of the rough surface, so they did some milling on a portion of Corning today, and they'll be doing that also tomorrow. And then that'll be followed up on Wednesday by patching, and they anticipate that would be continuing through the week of the 16th of November.
For the final paving.
Right.
Okay, so the stretch just from Third Street to Railroad Street is, you know, the one that'll still, Aqua will still be working on to get the line under the railroad. All right. We have some items from the chief, but those are down in the agenda, so we'll talk about those at that time. And I don't believe Bob had anything new to report with Public Works. So on to new business. First is business registration applications with Kristy Lorenz, High Performance Lab at 309B South Harlem Avenue. So are you, Kristy?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you just want to give us a little overview of what you guys want to do there?
I'm Kristy, so I've been Travis, managing the project, and what I want to do, those of you that are familiar with it, is the Pet Food Store. So I've coached football in this town for years. I'm a wrestling coach at the junior high right now, if we had wrestling right now. So I've been making an effort to try and keep the kids that I coach amongst any other kids that would otherwise be taking place in academic sports right now, to give them something to do. From the beginning, I've been, at first I did Zoom workouts for, say, I coached a couple different programs and a few different sports, so I have a lot of different kids I'm associated with, so I just opened it up for everybody, you know, my friends, daughters and whatnot. And we ran like a five-day-a-week schedule for Zoom workouts during the lockdown. And then once the lockdown was lifted, I did in-person workouts in my basement, you know, I invested like $1,500 in mats and set up my basement for this, but now that we're going into winter and another season of academic sports is being canceled, I have like more and more people that are interested in it. And the owner of that store is Wayne Kline. He's coached football with me. His kid's been, you know, coming to my house, doing all this kind of workouts throughout the whole pandemic. So he's helped me out, and we're kind of going together. I'm going to invest in mats and like mat out that whole space and then make it into a sports-specific training center. So, you know, if your kid plays football, you could join there at a monthly fee and have some kind of special workouts. I stay on top of what IDP is required with everything. I'm pretty close monitoring that because of the kids that have come to my house and stuff. So I have every intention of staying within their limitations and just doing what I can to keep the kids on a schedule and keep them doing some physical. I think it's important. With that being said, if I spend the money to mat out that room, I do plan on, if I could, like renting a space out to whoever I can get in there that would be interested in using a room full of mats. So, I mean, for instance, like a yoga class or a karate class or something. Okay, we do want to get someone in there like that to help pay the bills because, as everyone knows, youth sports isn't a lucrative business. I don't care, Wayne and I don't care if we ever make a dollar at this, and we're really trying to figure out how much we're okay with losing, you know, is the reality of it. But since I'm telling you what I'm going to be doing for business, I do plan on doing other things with it, if that's okay, meaning, you know, rent it out to martial arts or something like that, if I could.
Okay.
But primary reason I'd be doing, you know, to keep kids going with some kind of physical activity.
Great. And Amy, check the zoning is fine for the shoes, correct?
Yes, they have a B.3.
Okay.
Which is the highest business shoes.
Yep. Any other questions from the trustees?
The only question I have, what is the age group that you're looking at?
Well, right now it'd be all ages. Normally, normally I wouldn't coach high school kids because, you know, I'm a youth sports coach, so when you go to high school, you know, that's a different deal. Right now I have kids that are interested, high school kids are interested in doing this because, you know, they don't have anything else to do either. So I'm going to say all ages.
The kids, like up to 17?
Young kids as well. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've had kids do, you know, I coach kids from six-years-old.
No adults, no.
That's what I was saying. Is it like 17 and younger, right?
No, I don't want to say no adults because, like I said, if I can get an adult thing going in there to help pay the bills, I do intend on doing it.
Okay.
But my reason for doing it-
But your part of it would just be the kids.
For kids, and it'd be all-age kids.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Was this more like calisthenics instead of weight training or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like I usually use, if I put in weight, I don't, you know, like the high school kids that work out in my house, you know, they do like lifting weights and stuff, they're football coaches. They light down the lift weights, okay? The younger kids, like I say, my junior high kids, I usually have them, I'll put in kettlebells and stuff like that for their workout. I do add weight in, you know, on top of calisthenics. Like, for instance, when I was doing my Zoom workout, I had assumed that nobody had quit, right? So we did workouts 100% body weight. But I think it's effective to add weight in, if I could, you know, like in form of
Depending on how much money you want to lose, those are your words, not mine. Do you intend to do this 12 months a year, or are you going to shut down when it becomes early and go back?
I would have to do it as long as I could. With that being said, if the kids have somewhere to go to, I'll be happy, and I'll be happy walking away from it. Because going back to coaching at the junior high is what I do.
Any other questions? Not?
But for your answer, if, you know, if there's interest, I would be, I'd be thrilled to continue doing that. There's a passion of mine. I've coached, like I said, I've coached kids out of my house, and if, you know, when the season's over, I offer off-season training. I've always done this, so if I had a place in town, which I will, and I can keep the doors open, I will beyond them having other options. If there's, if kids still have interest, I'll keep doing it.
Great. Good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the business license for High Performance Lab.
I'll motion it. Second.
Been moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Sluse.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Fountain.
Yes.
Okay, good luck. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good luck.
All right, next, another business registration application for Asher Ben Patel, Peatone Tobacco and Liquor, 422 South Governors Highway. Kind of all rolled into this, there's a tobacco license that we need to approve and a liquor license, Class D. So we'll want to approve the business registration first, and then we'll go into the liquor license application. So Mr. Patel, do you want to give us a little rundown of your business and experience and all that?
Yeah, we sell the liquor, battered liquor, hard beer, wine and liquor and tobacco products.
And you have, you do have a location in Moni, correct?
Yeah, we do have a location in Moni.
Okay. Questions from the board?
How long you been in Moni?
Since 2010.
Where is it in Moni?
West Moni Manhattan Road, next to the school restaurant.
Oh, okay.
It's in that mini mall or whatever, strip mall.
Yeah, it is on the Advanced Water Park and Haralchi and then that one there, yeah.
Do you have gaming in Moni?
Yeah.
You do?
We just don't have before, but we just applied for a couple of years before and they approved. So we do have gaming, liquor and tobacco products also on there.
So you had mentioned that that might be something that'd be interesting here if we allowed it, correct?
If you guys have allowed that things to, yeah.
Yeah. So what do you do for the, because you have to serve food, right? Or you have to serve alcohol?
We have to serve like, you know, little beer or wine or something.
So how do you handle that in your current store?
Like, whatever, we have Moni, we have like a window fuller for the beer, wine, and if somebody needed, we serve the beer, wine, liquor. Because we have the combined license there, like one premises and one premises. So we can sell packaged and we can serve the beer also to the players. But right now, as like this situation, they shut down to dining and that kind of stuff, so we don't serve anything right now.
Oh, okay. And you're aware we don't have an open license for gaming, correct?
Uh, yeah.
We don't allow, at the moment, liquor stores, they don't, to pour, so, yeah.
A few things we don't allow.
Correct, at the moment. So, yeah, we would have to make some adjustments in the future.
Okay.
For that to be available.
If not, how about a motion?
I'll motion it.
I'll second.
To approve the business registration application for Peatone Tobacco and Liquor. Do we need to separate one for the tobacco license here?
I would put the tobacco on that, but I would have the liquor separate.
Okay, so is that your motion to approve the business registration and tobacco license?
Yes, it is.
So moved by trustee Fountain, second by trustee Morevka.
Fountain.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, so then on to the liquor license. Chief Moore did a background check, and everything was fine with the Class D licenses for packaged liquor carryout. What else do you guys like to know?
This is just a retail store, right? It's not like a bar or anything like that.
Right, yeah. No other questions? Undertain a motion to approve the liquor license, Class D application.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Sluse.
Is there any inclusion in the motion to direct the attorney to draw up the ordinance to provide for a liquor license for them?
So the motion will include direction for the attorney to draw up a liquor license for them?
The ordinance to give.
Right, to give the liquor license, yes.
To create, yes.
Okay, Ham.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Fountain.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
So will that ordinance have to come before the board at the next meeting?
Because you have to create the license to give it to them.
Right. So they'll have to wait two weeks before they can. Do you understand that?
Yes.
We'll have to do it at our next meeting to get, to give you the actual license, okay?
Thank you very much.
And get some time to get their insurance.
Yeah, get your insurance and bond and all that.
Yeah, I have a good time.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next item is a sign variance to allow electronic message center at Burkitt's 312 South Harlem. So the variance is just for the electronic message board. So our ordinance, our sign ordinance requires all electronic message boards to have to come before the village board for approval. So the sign itself that they are proposing is within our sign ordinance. It's just the electronic messaging that we're working on today, so.
So it looks similar to that.
Yeah. So are you here representing Burkitt's?
Yes.
You are?
I'm Lino Correia. I'm going to express signs and lighting maintenance, and I'm representing Burkitt's. Obviously, they want to upgrade the sign that they have currently. You're often going with Burkitt's, just like. They want to upgrade the sign, and as part of that, they want to move to a digital message center because it's much better to communicate all of the things that they want to communicate. We're trying to remain within the sign guidelines that you have, and all the little changes that it will be an electronic message center. We definitely have a small ID cabinet at the bottom or at the top. The picture you have says 15 millimeter, it's actually a 10 millimeter, which makes no difference to the size, it's just a better resolution. And one side benefit I want to mention is that with the upgraded sign, it will be part of the ICAUZ network, which integrates NOAA information, weather information, and AMBO alerts, things like that, emergency alerts, that can be piped directly into the sign and vehicle. So that's a benefit to the community as well. And happy to answer any questions.
So this sign will go off where the present sign is?
Yes, exactly.
Much larger is this than the current sign?
It should be the same square footage.
Any other questions? A motion?
I'll motion it. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Sluse to allow sign variance for an electronic message center at Burkitt's.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Fountain.
Yes.
Okay. Next, item D. I hope all of you had a chance to read over my proposal for downtown streetscape remodel, just so that anybody watching this kind of knows what we're talking about. I'd like to propose that we move forward with the downtown streetscape design and construction. We have funds available now to do that because we have instituted tax increment finance districts, a TIF district, and also Business Development District Tax. We did that a few years ago, and now we're starting to get some money into there. The other piece of the puzzle is that we sold our water and sewer system, and we have quite a bit of cash in the bank, so we have the funds available to do something like this. The village administrator and I have been meeting with different landscape architects firms over the past few months and trying to, just trying to get a ballpark cost of what this would be, or a ballpark idea what this would cost. And I'm proposing that we think about doing something on Main Street from Railroad to First Street, Second Street from Main Street to Crawford, and North Street from Second Street to Railroad Street. Doing a complete remodel, which I'm talking about, do roads, curbs, sidewalks, streetlights, some kind of festival space, plantings, seating areas. Rough cost estimate is going to cost about $1.5, $2 million to do something like that. So it sounds, you know, it's a lot of money. The way we would fund that, you know, we always look for grants, but grants take a while to get, and there's usually a lot of strings attached to them. I propose that we still apply for grants, and if we do receive a grant in the future, we can use it to possibly do an additional phase, like possibly doing more of First Street, or fix up the parking areas near the railroad. Another way to finance this would be bonds, interest rates are all-time low, but we still would be paying 3% or 4% interest on that. And the other way we do is self-funding. Like I said, we have money in the bank right now that we could use to move forward with this project as soon as possible. We can use the TIF and BDD funds to repay us back. So in essence, we'd be taking a loan from ourselves to do this project. And, you know, when we sold the water and sewer complex, we did it so that we would have money to move forward on development issues. When we did the TIF and the BDD, we did it to use the funds to promote businesses in town. So I think there's a perfect project for that. Our TIF administrator consultant, Amy and I talked to him last week, and he said this is a perfectly proper legal use of those funds. He suggested that we draft some kind of legal document that tries to prevent future boards from not, you know, repaying ourselves that money. But that's certainly possible. So right now, the Business Development Tax creates revenues of about $17,000 to $19,000 monthly. That number's only going to go up with future development, but even, you know, worst-case scenario, if that never goes up, if we earmark $10,000 a month for that, our payback term would be a little under 17 years. We don't want to use all that money to pay back at once because we want to have some flexibility in case another development comes up that we want to be able to, you know, take advantage of. And we also use the TIF money. This is, I'm just talking about the Business Development District, but somehow in our agreement to ourselves, we can put in there that, you know, we can, you know, use the TIF funds to pay that back as well. Because the TIF one, which is the downtown area, actually has some money in it now. I think because of just a quadrennial reassessment of the property, we captured, I think it was over $70,000, right? And part of that is, Marcy thinks the bank is going to, is protesting their reassessment, so we may get a little less than that, but still, that money, you know, if we get, let's say $50,000 this year, it's just, it's always going to be that amount and only go up as valuations go. So, I mean, that's another pool that we can use to repay something like this, or if somebody comes and wants to redo a facade of a building, you know, we can offer money to help with that, so. So I'd like, you know, you guys to give me your thoughts. I'd like you to consensus if you guys think this is a good idea. Next meeting or so, I'm going to bring forth the design firm and hopefully get them started on this project. You know, we will go through a process of input from the board and from the public and from the business owners of what they want to see down there. Kind of back up a little bit, we had a meeting with the CMAP group that a lot of you got interviewed for. They're doing a, what do you call it?
Peatone Priority Plan.
Yeah, the Peatone Priority Plan. So we had an update from them last week, and they had the results of the surveys they did and the phone conversations, and fixing up downtown was like one of the number-one things that everybody said that they wanted to see, which was, you know, so it kind of dovetails into this. I think this is something that the public wants, and, you know, it's something we've heard over and over again, why can't we fix up our downtown? And, you know, pieces are in place, and I think, you know, we got to go ahead and, you know, take the bull by the horns and take a bold step, so what do you guys thoughts?
I like the idea.
So so far, there's no drawings, no renderings at all, it's just?
So my old college roommate's a landscape architect, and he does this kind of stuff. So as a favor, I asked him to come and look, and he actually did a drawing that I can share with you guys, but, you know, it's kind of a rough thing, and he doesn't have the capabilities to go- But, you know, it's kind of a rough thing, and he doesn't have the capabilities to go through the whole design process, but he just gave us an idea of what could be done. And then he's offered to help us, you know, as we go through the process, just to kind of give us some unbiased advice. So he's more familiar with, you know, light posts and, you know, benches and tree plantings and stuff like that, so. But yeah, so to answer your question, we have some idea, and I will definitely share that with you guys. I'm going to have Amy send you the proposal that we got from one design firm, and I'll have her send the drawing that he did, so you can kind of see what it's like. We contacted three design firms to talk with. One of them, after they heard the size of our project, didn't want to deal with it. And the other two we talked to did give us a proposal. One of them was called Ratio, and the other was Upland Design. We're kind of leaning more towards Upland Design because it seems more in tune with what we really want to do, so. I'm going to have Amy send you guys that proposal. You can look it over.
The only reason I ask is some time ago on planning and zoning, there were several proposals brought forth, and there were a lot of good ideas, but I don't know if any of that remains or not.
Yeah, we were trying to look back and find that stuff, Wayne. I'll be honest with you. We cannot find any of that material.
I'd hate to say it, but I might have it.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you'd like to share it with us.
I'll take one.
Yeah, that would be great, but, yeah, so this, what the design firms would do is to spearhead gathering ideas from the board, from the business owners and the public, come up with some proposals for us to look at, and, you know, we give them feedback, what we like, what we don't want, or if there's something else. And then when we decide on something, then they develop the construction documents, and they would actually help us with the bidding process and oversee construction, you know, that type of thing, so. There's a fee to do that initial design work, of course, and then they usually take, like a general contractor, you know, take a certain percentage of, you know, the construction costs to be the general contractor, so. So that's kind of how it works.
How do we deal with the old abandoned buildings? I like the idea. I want to invest in the downtown, but I hate to spend that kind of money in.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I mean, first of all, you would hope that it would be a little contagious that, you know, when people see that we're investing in that area, that it would encourage them to fix up their own building. Like I said, with the TIF funds, we can offer some financial assistance to that as well, you know, fix up a facade or, and hopefully, as you get more business down there, then it makes it more valuable. You know, they just can't sit on that, you know, it makes it harder just to sit on a property. But, you know, if it comes down to, trustee Sluse is forward to meet some stuff on, there are certain communities that use a vacant, they have a vacant building ordinance where, you know, building owners have to register that building is vacant, you know, there's some fees associated with that, and, you know, perhaps if we get more serious about code violations, you know, that might, but I guess the answer is, to me, it's, you know, if you start fixing things up, and hopefully, it'll be a more, you know, be contagious that, you know, people want to fix up their own property. But I guess that maybe with a little more code enforcement and maybe we can help that along too. But if we don't do anything, it's probably just going to get worse if we don't.
I think if the trustee Parker, you might be referring to Lynette, who did some previous work for the village in some downtown planning.
Yeah, that could be.
They're no longer in business because we did try to reach out to them and find them and see if they would like to continue the work they started.
Well, we could at least look at the drawings.
Absolutely.
Supply.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other thoughts? Move forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. All right. Next item on the agenda is Christmas in the Village Parade and Parade Route. So Christmas in the Village Committee had a meeting last week. They decided to move forward with the parade, and so we need approval from the board to do that. The parade route will be the same as it has been in years past, which is from the junior high to West Street, West Street to Corning, Corning to First, First to Main, Main to Second, Second to Crawford, and Crawford back to West, and West back to the beginning, Applications are available, so if anybody wants to take part in the parade, it will be December 12th, correct? Is that what it was?
Yes.
It is the 12th.
Yes.
Questions, comments? Okay, entertain a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Parker, second by trustee Marevka.
Parker?
Yes.
Marevka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Yes. So in years past, the trustees have passed out little trinkets or whatever. We're not going to do that this year, so I asked Bob to maybe decorate a, one of the villages pickup trucks so we can, you know, ride in the back of that. So just kind of keep that in mind if you got that date open, okay? People can throw candy at us.
They're going to throw stuff at us.
Yeah. All right. Item F, replacement vacant full-time police officer position. So we had somebody retire recently. We've been going without that position filled for a couple of months. Basically, it's caused us to take our school resource officer out of the school, and so the chief wanted to present to the board the need to fill that position. So I talked to the chief, another officer, and basically, and I talked to Marcy about this as well. So with the school resource officer, his salary is paid by the school district when he's at the school. So about, because school is not in session year-round, it turned out to be about 60% to 70% of his salary is paid by the school. Having the extra officer offers the police a little more flexibility in scheduling. They're having to use a little bit of overtime to fill, to keep their shifts full, and I believe that they've been putting off some vacation time too during this last couple of months, and so. And the other thing is, you know, we've had a couple of officers out because of illness, you know, and that puts pressure on everybody else and increases overtime, so. I know we're always looking at the budget and the budget numbers, but I think that the value of the school resource officer, I mean, we have a great resource with Officer Stankus in the schools, and if we didn't have Officer Stankus, I wouldn't be as, you know, in favor of this, but because he is such a good resource for those kids, I think it's probably a good idea to go ahead and look at filling this vacancy.
This position isn't the school resource officer. It's the?
It provides the ability for Officer Stankus to go back to the school.
Okay.
Because he is not in the school right now.
So the school pays his salary. Does that include his benefits?
Yes.
It does?
Yep.
And all his training?
Yes.
Or the school resource stuff?
Yes.
But then when he's not at the school, he can serve as a filler?
Yes.
For the department?
Right.
For vacation in the summer, or things like that, is what you're saying?
Right.
Do you know if there's a pool that the chief can pick from now, or is he going to have to start from scratch?
I don't know. I'm not sure how quick he's.
I mean, he tells me he has a pool. Okay, good. Because I was going to say in our next meeting, we should tell him he should keep one. Or start one.
Yeah, I think he'd be able to move pretty quickly if that's your question.
The full-time person would be taking the spot of the person that went to the other department.
Correct.
A few months ago.
And it needs a full-time replacement as opposed to a part-time replacement?
I think Marcy said that budget was made for a full-time person.
No, I mean, the job duties, job hours. Doesn't need a full-time person or a part-time person?
I believe he's asking for full-time.
We're not allowed to, I mean, union contract states, you can't replace full-time with a part-time position.
Oh, didn't know that.
They don't, they frown upon that practice.
I'm sure they do.
Any other thoughts? All right, I'll entertain a motion to have the police chief fill the vacant full-time police officer position.
I will motion that.
Second.
Moved by trustee Marevka, second by trustee Parker.
Marevka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is replacement of police department server. So we had a little emergency a week or so, about 10 days ago, where the police department server went down. They were able to recover one of the drives. The, it's a mirrored drive system, so if you're familiar with servers, a mirrored drive means everything written on the one drive is copied on the other, so you have a physical backup. They also have a, you know, cloud backup that they do, but right now, that server's running on just one drive, and, you know, it's recommended that it be replaced. A little bit of background also, our, we have a separate server on the admin side that is about four years old, and the IT group that services that says that it, you know, should be looked at replacing that because of its age. And so we're kind of left with, we really need to do something pretty soon for this police department server so that we don't, you know, lose that completely. I talked to the IT department that does the police side, which, why we have two, I'm not really sure, but they said that there's no reason why we can't just have one server for the whole complex. There was some thought about, you know, security, you know, the stuff police does, you know, people, administration shouldn't be looking at, but that can all be partitioned off, you know, so there shouldn't be an issue with that. The cost to replace the police department server just as is would be about three grand. They said with extra memory and drives to possibly have that server serve as, the server for the whole building would probably cost about $1,500 more, so. My thought would be to, let's get that server running, you know, get a new server going, and then get quotes from our IT server on this side, the IT company on this side, and, you know, see what we can do. The only thing, they would have to run cable. There's no cable between the two departments, so. I think probably in the long run, it'd be better if we had just one server, one IT department, one IT consultant instead of fooling around with two separate ones.
I agree.
So I guess what I'm asking for is to approve up to $5,000 to replace this server with the idea that that will also, you know, be able to serve for the whole building at some point, and go from there. So this money is available through capital improvements. There is, Marcy does have an item, line item in there for computer replacement, so.
When could they turn this around?
I think it would be probably within a week or two, I would imagine. The guy said it wouldn't be that difficult to get what they need, so.
The police IT guy's got the capability to run the whole, because we're pretty much picking him now.
Well, what I would propose, we pick him to do what he needs to do with the police server, and then also have the admin IT guy come in and look at, I mean, it's just a computer. The other guy should be able to figure out if he, you know, what he would propose. I'd like to get a proposal from both of them to hook the two together and, you know, I should say, replace the server over there and just cable, you know, over, so. Is there a motion to approve up to $5,000?
A motion to up to $5,000 for a new server for the police.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Ham.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes. Marevka? Yes.
All right. I've got a few items I want to go over. I talked a little about CMAT, their Piatone Priority Plan. Their next step is to actually come up with a plan. They presented us with a lot of demographics, a lot of results of the survey. It was all very interesting. Not a lot of stuff that I didn't know already, but it's nice to see it all put together in one place. Except their next step is to actually give us some recommendations on how we should move forward with the village, so it'll be interesting to see that. That is, I believe, when is that going to be? Like February, March, something like that?
The final?
Yeah.
They gave it to that long, as a contingency, but hopefully in December.
Yeah.
They want to actually give us some recommendations by the end of November.
Good. Little update on the logo. You know, I did, I put that out for the public to kind of vote on them, and it got a lot of good feedback. The two most popular designs seem to be the traditional windmill and then, you know, the smaller blue windmill with just the village of Piatone on there. So I'm going to use that feedback to kind of come up with something, and, you know, one of the future meetings, we'll try to go over that again, so.
Do you remember what their numbers were?
Uh...
There was a 66 and a 2. Do you remember which one was what?
I can tell you in a second if you can.
So that when we go back and look at the minutes, we'll, okay, well, which one was that?
Yeah. So number 2 was the most popular. That was the traditional one. And number 66 was the second. Okay. Okay. Update on, you know, we talked about I-57 a little bit, about the design phase. The other thing that's holding us up out there is the Easeman on Eighty-Eighth Street. Amy is meeting with Iroquois Farms and Mr. Patel on Thursday?
Yes.
So hopefully, you know, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, but we're hoping that possibly a settlement will come out of that, so that we can move forward, at least that, get that off of our plate. Wilmington Road, walkway, pathway, whatever you want to call it, we're still waiting to see if we are gonna receive the I-Tech grant for that. Amy submitted that a few weeks, or just, I guess, a week ago or so. We won't hear about that probably till March, right?
Till spring.
Till spring. In the meantime, we're trying to explore how much it would cost to even just put a limestone pathway out there, and it looks like, I mean, it's not gonna be cheap, but even the limestone, they are saying it's eighty dollars a liter a foot, and we have anywhere from about eighteen hundred feet, if we just want to go to Gull Landings to get people the sidewalk system there, or to get all the way to McDonald's, you're looking at, what was it, twenty-four?
Yeah, twenty-two to twenty-four.
Twenty-four hundred feet, so I mean, multiply that by eighty.
Plus, we have to do crossings, crossing, some type of crossing infrastructure somewhere, so it's gonna be expensive.
So there's, and I hate, you know, I really hate to do anything more than a limestone path, even though asphalt would be, they said it would be about a hundred dollars a foot, which isn't that much more, but the fear is if we put something out there, you know, Will County has Wilmington Road on its list of widen, and if we put something down there, you know, they could come through in a couple years and wipe that out, you know? So whether they would replace it or not with something, you know, we're kind of at their mercy, because we're putting this in there right away. So we're kind of keeping that on the back burner. You know, let's all hope we get the I-Tech grant. If we don't, then we're gonna have to make a decision on how we want to do that. I know we all want to move forward with that, so it's just some things to keep in mind. I think, you know, save the cost, we just go to Gull Landings and get people to use the sidewalks to get, you know, McDonald's and Shell from there, but, you know, and then, so anyway, so that's the pathway. I want to thank trustee Jones for driving up to Morton Arboretum with me last Thursday. We picked up some really nice elm trees, and Public Works is gonna be putting those in the ground here soon. We had to get Julie to mark the spots, so that was good. Like I said, Corning Road, we're hopefully heading to Homestretch with that. The AV system that we talked about last meeting is gonna be installed the end of this week, so that's good news. We should have it for our next board meeting, which, as you may have, may not heard, we're kind of regressing in our mitigation plans for the virus. We're going to Phase Four Tier Two, which, you know, it's kind of moves us down to having fewer people at meetings and stuff, so. Moving forward, I'm gonna close the board meetings to the public. We'll have, you know, the call-in numbers posted again, and until we kind of move back the other way, I think that's probably the best thing to do. We pick up through the end of the month, keep the leaves out of the street, and let's all observe Veterans Day and thank all of our veterans who give us the ability to have free meetings like this, so. That's all I have. Anybody else have comments, questions? Anything?
As I, you did your YouTube posting today about the street.
Yes. Yeah, so that was on there about the, you know, hopefully finishing up on Corning. We're hoping that they'll be able to finish the paving by next week, so.
So the village hall right now is closed to visitors for the next two weeks, so we'll keep posted on that.
Yeah.
When will we be open to visitors?
Yeah, just so the public knows, we did have a employee test positive, so just as a bonus caution, we're keeping the visitors out of the village hall for two weeks, and, you know, depending on where we go with this mitigation plan, I mean, we may be closed beyond that, but we'll take it one step at a time. There's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Morevka.
Ham?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Do you mind if everybody make sure they sign in?
Yeah. Did you guys all sign in when you came in? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Patel, did you guys sign in?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to town.